Would you call the roll, please?
JR Huddleston.
Here.
Debra Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Linda Varvel.
Here.
Melanie Wilson.
Here.
Dave Burris. Thank you.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, counsel, if you have any conflicts of interest, please let the council know before you vote. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the minutes from the August 15th meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 15th council meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the bills in between?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between for $218,858.21.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the current claims?
I make a motion to approve current claims of $303,527.30.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. A motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit cards.
Make a motion to approve Wells Fargo credit card claims for $7,371.71.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Brings us to communications from the public. Before we get into them, I just need to mention that we have a public hearing at 7:20. So if the public is addressing you at the 7:20 period, we'll ask you to pause so that we can address the public hearing, and then whoever is speaking will have the opportunity to come back up. With that, communications from the public look like we have someone wants to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Susan Henderson. I am a longtime resident of Fall River County, always born in Hot Springs. I have a cattle ranch south of Edgemont, and I have long been concerned about the uranium project that Power Tech has proposed for our county. Recently, 458 people signed a petition to put uranium mining as a nuisance on the ballot for November 8th. This is probably the most important thing that has happened regarding this 12-year project ever. It gives the man in the street, you and me and everybody that cares about Fall River County, a chance to say at a vote whether or not we want this god-awful project. And I have a few comments that I want to make to you about why we don't want this. The first problem is that this project would involve the use of 9,000 gallons a minute for 16 to 20 years of water. And though Power Tech may say that it puts some of the water back into the aquifers, and so therefore they're not using 9,000 gallons a minute, what they have in their permit application is to drill 1,000 wells and to promote and take 9,000 gallons a minute. To get that in perspective for you, Rapid City uses 6,500 gallons a minute. So this is a huge amount of water, and it will be done in a very disadvantageous manner to the aquifers. In other words, they will put chemicals into the wells, exuvients and a mixture of oxygen and CO2, which they claim is a very benign well. Actually, oxygen and CO2 makes a highly corrosive chemical called carbonic acid. But anyway, these acids will then go down into the wells, dissolve the underground structures that hold the uranium and various rock structures and limestone and various things that are under there. They will then pump it to the top of the ground. They will transport it two or four miles to some processing centers that they have, and then they will extract the uranium, and then they will let this sludge water accumulate and evaporate to a certain level, and then at some point they may or may not put it back down into the aquifers. Well, let's think about that a minute. I mean, what you're going to do is first you're going to take a huge amount of water that you can't afford to lose, and then you're going to contaminate it with these exuvients, uranium sludges, various things. It's crazy. Now, the next thing that has happened that I've become aware of is that Vladimir Putin from Russia has a company called Uranium One, and that company has bought a company called Energy Metals Corporation. It has 20% of the mineral leases in the Dewey-Burdock project. So if this goes through, what will end up happening is Vladimir Putin will have a big thing to say about what happens to our water in this area. And, you know, I have been watching in horror what he's doing in the Ukraine. I don't trust him from here to the edge of that box. And the bottom line is, we should have no business allowing him to have any control over our water in this area. The third thing I want to talk to you about is the fact that now that this is on the ballot, we can vote for the initiative measure, which says uranium mining is a nuisance in Fall River County. And of course, nuisance is a legal term, which we are using because we don't have planning and zoning in this county. So but you can use a nuisance designation to shut the thing down. So in effect, if we were to vote this in, we would basically make uranium mining in Fall River County unlawful, which would be a terrific thing. Now, the other problem with this is, is that the water request and the uranium mining request do not exactly track together. In other words, this company could get ahold of our water, sell it to an outside corporation, another country, you name it, and never have to dig a single pound of dirt out there at the Dewey-Burdock. The Dewey-Burdock area is an area of some 20,000 acres or so that is extremely damaged now. It should be a superfund site. I went to the EPA in Denver and talked to the head of the EPA down there for Region Eight, and I said, hey, how can you have 8,700 boreholes into the ground out there and three, count them, three open pit mines that are a mile across with 200 feet deep uranium-laden water in them, and a host of other smaller open pit mines, plus piles of slag and piles of dirt and piles of uranium stuff? How can you have this out there and not do something about it? She looked at me and she said, well, first of all, this was created by the federal government before the EPA was created, so we do not have a fiduciary responsibility to clean that up. And I said, oh, so what does that really mean? And she said, well, what it really means is this has gotten out of control. She said, there are 10,000 of these sites across America, and they are not being cleaned up. Well, now, what's Vladimir Putin doing? He wants to have Russia back to the way it was in the Cold War, and he's in the process of moving eastward toward Europe. He's now shut off the gas to Europe. He's got the Germans and a whole bunch of those other countries in a state of terror. He is destroying the Ukraine, and he wants to control the uranium worldwide. Well, what's he going to do with that? Well, he's going to make weapons. That's what he's going to do with that. And so what we would be doing, if we allow this to go forward, is we will allow this Russian tyrant to get ahold of worldwide uranium sources, and he will be able to make weapons to blow up our cities. This is crazy. We need to protect our water here, and we need to protect our right to not have uranium mining and all the things that go with it. Now, the NRC said, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, when they gave them a permit, they said, well, you need to go out there and remediate those 8,700 boreholes and do something about those open pit mines and this and that. Well, that was some 10 years ago, and they have never moved a shovel of dirt. They have no intention of doing this. But what they could do is sell the water. It's very, very valuable. Millions of dollars of water could be sold, and we could sell it to the Chinese. You know, I would remind you that at one point, that company was run by a company in Hong Kong called Zargah, and they had Chinese interests in it. So there are Chinese interests in this. There are Russian interests in it big time, and wow, you know, this is a scary number. So I urge you to look at your ballot on November 8th. The initiative is the very last item on the ballot. Vote yes for it, and you will make uranium mining unlawful in Fall River County. Do we have any questions?
I believe we wrote a letter of support for this issue last year.
In opposition to uranium mining, yes.
Opposition as a council last year.
You wrote a letter opposing the project?
Yes.
I commend you for doing that. I think you did do that, and I'm delighted with that. But I would urge you to tell all your supporters, all your voters, everybody to vote this out now while we have the chance to do this. And if we don't do this, then, you know, that's a powerful group of people, the Chinese and the Russians. They have money, and they can play with us, and we might not be able to fend them off. But we have this initiative got onto the ballot despite their objections to, you know, huge objections. So let's try to vote it in, and, you know, that's what I would recommend.
I want to thank you and everybody that passed that petition around. You're priceless.
Well, you're welcome, okay? I mean, you know, I had a, well, I'll tell you who he is. His name is Jim Sword. He was the architect of the petition. And he said, you know, we should have done this 10 years ago. And I said, well, hey, 10 years ago, we, A, didn't know what was going on, and the other thing was, we had too many shareholders, too many people that had bought stock in it, hoping to make a killing. And of course, now those people are very upset. They've lost their money. That stock has gone from $20 a share on average to 2 cents a share when it trades. And this company, Encore, that has now taken it over, is not financially stable. They wrote a forward-looking report here the other day that I pulled up off of cedar.com, and they said, hey, you know, we're not profitable now, but if we get something done, we might be profitable. Hello. And, you know, they've never done any uranium mining at all, period, end of story. Wait a minute. We cannot turn our water and this uranium project over to this kind of a company. It just makes no sense. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Most of you know me. I'm Rick Breitenbach, Airport Manager. And on behalf of Black Hills Fly-In, we have a fly-in this Saturday. Sorry, my thing's a lot lighter. So it's not going to be a heavy discussion. We have a fly-in this week, and I want to encourage all of city council to come out to the airport. I have here a personal invitation to each council member to join for dinner on Saturday at 6 o'clock at the airport. Come and see what a fly-in is. See what the airport provides to the community.
Mayor, would you like me to do a notice of quorum?
Yes.
Well, can I have an invitation so I know what to put in the notice of quorum? Because they can't all go to the same place without a note.
Okay. Can I bring you on tomorrow?
Yep. Email me the details if you have that. That'd be great. Thank you.
Rick? These aren't funded by taxpayer dollars, are they?
This is my personal invitation out of my own lot of leftover cards.
Thank you.
And the fly-in is actually supported privately by those that are attending, and they're offering you a free dinner to come out and see them.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Let's jump down to council updates. Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, annual report. Shelley gets the honors. All right. In about four minutes, I'm going to interrupt you when we get to 7:20 our public hearing.
Okay.
It shouldn't take long, and then after that, the floor is yours again.
I have about 10 minutes, so I think. Thank you, city council and mayor, for the opportunity to be on the agenda.
Can you speak into the mic a little more?
It's taller than most people.
It moves up a little better? I can't make it any taller.
Where's Carl at? Here he comes. Here comes Carl.
I think I got it. Is that better? Yeah. Okay. As you said, my name is Shelley Higgins-Brown, and I am the president of Keep Hot Springs Beautiful. I just wanted to quickly show you, also in attendance here are some of our board members. Would you guys please stand? So this is John Notheice, Beth Spitzer, who's our vice president, Sherry Largent, who's our treasurer, Sandra Mero, and Caitlin Mossitt, who is our secretary. We have two other members who aren't here, so we're a total of eight on our board.
Thank you.
So we're a small but mighty team with backgrounds as diverse as our strengths, but we're all a really good team. We see ourselves as your partner, and because of that, we feel it's important that you understand why we do, what we do and how we do it. For 16 years, Keep Hot Springs Beautiful has been selflessly serving the community. The annual report that's included in your packet highlights how we did that in our fiscal year 2022, which ended in July. I've listed in the report a number of individuals and organizations that we recognize and thank for their support, and we're very grateful to each and every one. And Carl's one of those guys. We have a couple of events that we hold here, and he makes them all run seamlessly. And Billy's a great help to us, too. So I could go on, but those are my highlights. If you turn your attention to the section that I called the 2022 Snapshot, you can see that we had 216 volunteers participate in our programs this year. Those were individuals, groups, families and organizations, and together those folks logged 1,627.75 hours. If those hours were paid out at just $12 an hour, that would total $19,533. Through our recycling programs in the middle section of that page, we were able to divert 3,613 pounds of aluminum and 17,450 pounds of steel and various metals to keep them from ending up in landfills, pastures and road sides. We currently have 22 business members and 85 individual members in our organization. Ms. Johnston is a current member, and she participates in several of our programs. And Debra, we're grateful to you for that.
You're welcome.
This is a decent stopping place. Do you need me to stop now?
Do you have a joke or something that can get us?
I'll go through the first one. I can do that quickly. If you turn to the section on our programs, you'll see that our first program is the Earth Day Rummage Sale, which is our primary fundraising event. We hold this event here at the Mueller Center, and the first day is our donation day, where we accept donations of items that can be reused or repurposed. On day two, we open to sell those items, and we don't set prices. We negotiate with the public for sales. And I have to say, I'm consistently surprised and pleased at the generosity of this community. This year, we netted $4,678.81 at the sale, all of which goes back into community programs.
Well.
Good time. All right. We're at 7:20, public hearing. Hearing to act on the alcoholic beverage license applications from Frog Projects LLC, doing business as The Space for an on-off-sale retail malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License and an on-off-sale retail wine license to be used at 108 North Chicago Street. Is there anyone here from The Space that would like to address the council? Marty?
Hi, do you have any questions?
All right.
You're mostly a... Hi, I'm Martin Meyer and a partner in Frog Projects and co-owner of The Space, and we are currently a event rental space. And if we get our beer and wine, we also want to open up and sponsor some mostly musical events, but we have showers and receptions and parties and all that sort of good stuff happening down at The Space, so. Any questions?
Your timing's impeccable.
The what?
Your timing's impeccable.
Yeah. Well, thank you. My wife doesn't always agree with that, but that's good.
Are there questions from council?
So you will provide alcohol to all these other events that rent The Space?
Well, we would be selling it if, yeah, if there's an event rental there, and then we sponsor our own events there as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone from the public that has a question for Marty? One more time, council. Any questions? All right. Thank you, Marty. Publics, one more time? All right. Let's go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:22. And I'll need a motion to approve, deny or table the alcoholic beverage license.
Make a motion to approve the alcoholic beverage license applications from Frog Projects LLC, doing business as The Space for an on-off-sale retail malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License and an on-off-sale retail wine license to be used at 108 North Chicago Street. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Tue, would you call the roll, please?
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
Debra Johnston.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Linda Varvel.
Yes.
Melanie Wilson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for keeping one of our sandstones active and in good shape.
Shelley?
Okay. So we had just talked about the Earth Day Rummage Sale, and the next program that's on that list is the Great American Cleanup, which we hold the first Saturday in May every year. It's our most well-attended program. This year, 87 volunteers worked 261 hours to clean seven sections of Fall River, the downtown area, Centennial and Butler Parks, the public library and the Hot Springs Public School. Our focus is on litter collection, but unfortunately, we don't have a way to quantify the amount of litter that we remove. But suffice it to say that the difference we make is noticeable. I'll add here that this event would be a great time for anyone on the stage to come out and mingle with the community. We have a little stand-around time while the volunteers are signing in, getting assignments and gear, having safety briefings, et cetera. So we'd love to see you there mingling with community members or even participating as volunteers. Our community cleanup weeks represented in this report actually cover August of 2021, which is the beginning of our fiscal year, and June and July of 2022. So during those three events, 40 volunteers worked 267 hours. You might remember that that program grew from a grassroots effort last year prior to the Bloom Festival, when the town was looking pretty grim because of weed overgrowth. So in that first event, we had an amazing 30-plus volunteers, which represents 3/4 of the total number over the year, and they worked 125 hours, which is about half the number of hours represented in the total. I don't really have a good explanation for why the turnout was so low for June, July and even August of 2022, even though those numbers aren't included in this report. But our estimate after that work is that a minimum of 80 hours per month, ideally from May through September, is needed to keep the weeds under control. We were not able to mobilize enough volunteers to successfully complete that program, and as such, we're seriously considering discontinuing it. We're open to suggestions to sustain it because we feel it's a tremendously valuable program, but we just can't do it alone. Moving along to our fall programs, we hang Christmas lights in Centennial Park the first Saturday in November. This is a really fun event, and we enjoy sharing fellowship with the community members who turn out to help. That same evening, we have our annual banquet and meeting where we celebrate our successes, enjoy a buffet-style meal and host a speaker with a relevant topic. Both of these events are also great venues for anyone on the stage to attend. Your presence there would go a long way in the eyes of the community to help solidify the partnership between this organization and the city. I mentioned aluminum recycling in the beginning, and we're grateful to Baumgart's for allowing them, for them allowing us to park our recycling trailer in their parking lot. We appreciate the community donating cans, preferably in tied bags. We netted $1,853.88 this year, so that's a nice consistent income for us. We're probably most well-known for our bumpouts, or pods, as we affectionately refer to them internally. This year, 36 volunteers worked 172 and a half hours, which is minuscule compared to the years when the bumpouts are planted and thriving. We may be the only ones who have actually benefited by the road construction and the subsequent delays associated with it, because we, with essentially no or very low expenses in 2020, '21 and '22, we were able to bank our relatively normal income from those years and put it toward the rollout of the new bumpouts. We have budgeted $25,450 to purchase topsoil, grass, mulch, trees, shrubs, flowers and other items. At the time of this writing, we're underfunded by approximately $10,000, but we expect to make up this deficit on time to complete the project. Regarding grants, we apply for local, regional and national grants. In '22, we were awarded a $5,000 restricted grant from Golden West for use in the bumpouts. We also received unrestricted grants in the amount of $250 from Thrive Financial and $60 in Chamber bucks from the Hot Springs Chamber. We're optimistic about additional grants that we've applied for to fund in 2023. Looking at the road ahead, we know that Hot Springs is naturally beautiful, and we need only to have a collaborative effort between the community, the city, and Keep Hot Springs Beautiful to keep it that way. We have no shortage of amazing ideas for future programs and projects, but what we do have a shortage of is members and volunteers. So I ask this question without a cloud of pessimism, but rather with a strong shot of reality. What if? What if we don't have the members, the volunteers and support to continue to have the impact on the community? We have, for 16 years, stepped up to take the task of bumpout greening, as well as litter and weed mitigation, metal and aluminum recycling. We stepped up to relieve the city of these tasks so that the city can focus on the plethora of other tasks that are required of you. We not only enjoy partnering with you in this endeavor, we are passionate about it. We believe that we are at a critical point, though. We live in a county where almost 30% of the population is age 65 or over, and much of what we do is the work of younger, stronger bodies. We struggle to fill the volunteer pool needed not only for our programs but also for our board. There are eight of us. We need 12. We have 100 members. We need 200. We have a handful of volunteers who offer us hands-on participation. We need a couple dozen. We love what we do, and we will do everything we can to reinvigorate the community to join us in keeping Hot Springs beautiful. Lastly, our financial summary. Due to the road construction, fiscal year... an independent audit conducted by Gail Sprinthal. It was my intention to provide you with this information and offer you a greater understanding of our organization. I'm happy to take questions here or in follow-up by phone or email. Thank you for your time and attention.
Counsel?
Great report. Thank you.
Yeah, very thorough. Thank you.
Big wow to everything you do. That's a, that's a lot, a lot of work on a consistent, on a consistent basis.
Thank you.
We appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. If there's any chance I can help, I'll be down and help. But if not, thank you again for everything to make Hot Springs Beautiful.
Thank you.
I think my major concern on Shelley's report, excuse me, is the fact that they may not be able to do the, the cleanups, the, well, they quarterly, I guess, you do four a year, right? So, that's a significant impact to us as a city, as a city, and I just want to make a point of that. I mean, I hope that doesn't go away, but we need to know that, so.
And we, we're open to a lot of, to any options with that. Some of the things I don't know how to do in the state that my husband and I came from, people who were in jail helped with things like that. I don't know how to make that sort of thing happen. John is, works at the school, and he has some ideas about how to, how to get students involved, school organizations, so we're trying, but if any of you have ideas or suggestions, we'd love to hear them. And I'd like to invite you all to become members.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnston can tell you how wonderful it is.
Shelley, I do have a couple things before you leave. I appreciate that you've been coming to some of the weekly construction meetings. It's been very helpful.
For me, too.
And I, I think the construction crews themselves, you know, appreciate some of the questions you've put to them and trying to figure out how, you know, that's going to work. So, thank you for taking the time to come down. There's been a couple occasions it seemed obvious that you were leaving the pods to come to the meeting. So, you had mentioned bumpouts, pods. I, I think it's important for the public to remember that the bumpouts belong to the city. For so many years, when they were considered pods, they belonged to keep Hot Springs Beautiful. At least that was the perception from some of the public. And well, why is the city getting involved? Why should the city provide resources for pods that don't belong to us when they actually do belong to the city? That was the reason that we put a resolution in place to put topsoil in them and not put concrete in them so that we could continue having the great-looking pods. So, I just thought it was important, when you'd mentioned bumpouts and pods, and we giggled a little bit, that they are bumpouts, but affectionately, they'll always be known as pods. And I just want to remind the public that the pods are bumpouts, and they are the city's responsibility with the help of Keep Hot Springs Beautiful to, to keep them looking good. So, thank you for that. Pleasure taking on two other large areas that you didn't have before.
Absolutely. Yep, we're excited about that. Caitlin and Beth have been working hard on the layout for that, and, you know, we'll, we'll begin setting expectations for the public soon, because, you know, a garden, if some of you I know are gardeners, you don't plant it, and it's beautiful the next day. You know, it'll look good the first year, it'll look a little better the second year, the third year, or maybe the fourth year is when it's going to look like what it looks like in all of our heads, so.
And having those bumpouts be so, dirt is saving the city tens of thousands of dollars that would have cost, the road project would have cost filling that area with hot concrete and very, you know, plain, blah, concrete. So, big kudos that you're willing to take, keep taking those on.
I don't know if I'm being noticed, but the topsoil they're using, there's an overabundance of goat heads growing in those. I don't know where the topsoil's come from, but goat heads are almost impossible to get rid of.
Yeah, we haven't actually purchased any topsoil yet.
I'm talking about what the state's bringing in.
Yeah, yeah. The way I understand it, from attending the meetings, is the, the topsoil that's on North Jennings is the end of that topsoil that came from DRM, right?
Yes.
And that, I think, was the worst of the topsoil, and we're hopeful that it's, that it's getting better as we move along. But, yeah, we, we plan to purchase some topsoil, especially for the new, larger, the welcome median, especially, we will have a hard time getting trees to grow there if that's covered in goat heads, for sure. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you so much.
Set to respond to your goat heads, Craig. Nothing's as simple as it seems it should be, and the topsoil has to come from excavation areas that have been certified by the State Historic Preservation Office. That doesn't have any kind of archaeological anything in them, so they're not free to just go get topsoil that might be the best. They have to have the blessing of the State Historical Preservation Office to get that topsoil. They're getting it where they're authorized to get it from. All right, so that takes us to personnel. I'd like to break the personnel up into two votes. I'd like to take Personnel Action Item A first as a single motion. So, if I could get a motion to approve Personnel Action Item A. When we're done with that, then we'll take the rest of them.
I make a motion to approve Personnel Action Item A, Ross Norton Promotion Full-Time Police Chief, 29, 24-hour, 86% topscale, effective 9/7/22.
Second. Discussion? Ms. Tebow, do you call the roll, please?
I'm changing my minutes real fast, because I didn't know you were going to do that.
Sneaky.
J.R. Huddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Linda Varvel?
Yes.
Melanie Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Chief Norton.
Congratulations.
Is he here?
All right, he's out there.
Oh, okay.
So, then if I could get a motion to approve Personnel Actions B through P.
I would make a motion to approve Personnel Actions B through P.
Second.
Discussion? So, the reason I asked you to do it this way is we have been rebuilding our police department, and council, you more than anyone, are well-aware that it hasn't been easy to find certified police officers. And in this particular case, the two officers that are in front of you, Justin Richardson and Kenneth Ayers, for consideration, I wanted to give our new chief an opportunity to talk about the interview process and why these particular individuals are being recommended.
Good evening. So, Justin Richardson, Kenneth Ayers, both guys, significant experience. Justin has seven and 1/2 years as a military police officer, and then he's got 11 years as a civilian police officer in Colorado and the state of South Dakota. Kenneth Ayers, also a military veteran, and then he has 18 years of law enforcement experience in the state of Arizona, the state of South Dakota, and the Oglala Sioux Tribe. So, both of these guys came in with an abundance of experience. Why did they choose Hot Springs? I think your guys' work was a big thing to do with that. The increase in pay definitely helped. And then that training budget, that was a big deal to two, these two guys. With their expertise and their, their training and their knowledge, they both are field training officers, they both have a ton of training credentials that they want to bring to our department. And when we were able to sit down and talk about that increased training budget that you guys allowed for next year, it got their, it got their blood pumping, and they got excited about it because they saw an opportunity for them to pass what knowledge they have down while also being able to, you know, continue their education themselves. Law enforcement is continuously changing. We have to adapt or die, so the ability that we have to continue our training education, you know, instead of having, with the abundance that you guys gave us, it's really exciting for everybody in our department, particularly these two guys as well. When we did interviews, we had six total interviews, four uncertified guys, two certified guys. I think when you're interviewing somebody, they're also interviewing you back, and Phil and I really preached on our vision moving forward, you know, how we want this department to be, the accountability, the leadership, you know, family-oriented. And these guys decided that they wanted to come work here, and we're really excited to have them, so really appreciate if you guys approve them.
Did you say they're both certified in South Dakota?
So, Ken, I emailed the state about Ken. Ken most recently worked in South Dakota in 2019, but he's been in law enforcement since then. Said all we have to do is update his training records with his North Dakota stuff, and he'll be certified through the state.
And everyone is already.
And Justin currently, Justin currently holds his state certification.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
So, how many positions will we still have open?
So, we've actually offered a third position to an uncertified gentleman. He has not accepted it yet, so we have three vacancies, two of which will be filled after today, hopefully, and then we're just waiting on a response on the third.
Wow, so we might have a fully staffed...
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, my gosh.
Shh, don't say it loud.
Deborah, and I've been on, I've been on the horn.
Jinx it.
I've been on the horn with South Dakota LET. We have spots reserved for two people, tentatively for November. We have to get some help to get those guys in November. Well, they're guaranteed two spots in March for the academy if we have two uncertified guys, so. No later than theoretically, May of next year, we'll have eight full-time sworn officers. Certified officers.
Scary.
So, that's all I got.
Fabulous.
Guess I'll go slow, Dan.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Chief.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Chief.
have been put to us by the public as far as certified, not certified, experience, the actions that the council has taken to raise salaries, and as Chief Norton talked about, the training budget. I thought it was important that he's able to share that with you and the public of why we're, we're making some progress. We're getting to that land of awesome that Captain Shively has talked about. So, it's a start. Council, thank you for everything you've done to put these votes in front of you. So, do you have any other comments, questions? To be fair to the process, we've also waited a while for Administrative Assistant at City Hall if there's anything that Jeff or Ms. Tebow would like to share.
I'm just really excited for her to start and get to trainer, as my assistant finance officer just accepted a contract on her house, and so has not provided her resignation yet, but will be leaving, so closes and she sells her house. So, I'm excited to get a new admin assistant starting, and soon we'll be posting for another position in City Hall.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Takes us to ordinances. First reading of ordinance 1242. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1242, 2023 appropriation ordinance.
Second. Discussion? For the public, that's the 2023 budget that council spent three nights going over. Ms. Tebow, do you call the roll?
I'd like to clarify, Melanie, you have the second?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Sorry, it was, uh, I guess it wasn't me.
It wasn't you?
It was Melanie. It was Melanie.
Melanie Wilson. Yes, or no, I heard. Linda Varvel.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Onto resolutions. Resolution 2022-20, a resolution to amend birthday party fees.
I make a motion of 2022-20, resolution to amend birthday party fees at the Evans Plunge, Evans Plunge, from $125 to $135 due to increased food costs.
Second.
Discussion? Linda, Jeff, do you have anything to offer on this one?
Not unless it's subject to your questions, no. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, it's increasing food costs primarily.
Do we have any info on how many birthday parties we do have down there?
I can, I can provide that after the fact in the minutes, if you like.
Yeah, I think for revenue, we projected $1,000, if it's $125 a birthday party.
Yeah.
We'll get numbers for birthday parties, numbers.
I think, I don't, do we do much advertising or getting the idea out there that we do do birthday parties down there?
She's busy with this, I can tell you. So, I'll, but I'll get exact numbers for you, Deb, I don't have those.
Okay. I'd just like everyone to know that that's their option. And a lot of people don't know that it's an option, maybe.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Resolution Item B, resolution 2022-21.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-21, a resolution to surplus city property.
Second. Discussion?
I'd just like to point out that this includes the red doors that everyone's always worried, wondering about. The red doors are in this list.
I have a question about the Texaco fuel sign. Is it going to be taken down, or whoever buys it has to take it down? Because isn't it inside a building?
It's, it's still installed outside of the fuel station. It's not inside a building.
They'll have to remove it.
And it's not antique?
I, I don't, I don't know, what do you consider an antique? I don't know. I don't know. It's been there forever, it's an antique, well, for me, I don't know. We can take that word out if you like.
What is it?
What, how long has it been there?
It's a pole sign, a Texaco pole sign.
Texaco hasn't been around for a while.
In my mind, that's an antique.
It probably isn't an antique.
But it's a, it's a classic sign, porcelain.
We'll call it a classic, not an antique. How's that sound? Okay, there you go.
Verbage.
It is a classic, but it's...
Yeah.
If we're changing anything, we have to be clear about it, because this is what's presented and been given to the public.
Do you want us to remove the word antique from that resolution?
Well, it's not necessary, but people's going to think it's an antique.
That's fine.
They're going to, the auctioneers will have pictures and descriptions of each actual item. These were just descriptions to help you identify them.
But the reason I'm asking is the way we advertise it, if they say it's not going to take it down, somebody's going to have to do that.
Okay.
And you can use, need some kind of crane or something to get it down without breaking it.
I don't think that changes the resolution, does it? But we'll, we'll ensure with, with Bradine that that's included in the, the write-up, but they have to remove it.
And remove antique?
Yeah. If you want to remove the word antique, that's fine. We can do that.
And I plan on bidding on it, so I don't have to take it down.
Okay, we'll take the word antique out, that's fine.
Where's it located at?
The airport.
Airport.
At the airport.
Oh, okay. Do we know when this sell is going to occur yet?
Yes, it's on your...
It's on there.
October 26 through...
Yeah, it's the last, last week of October.
On the 1st.
Yeah.
It's going to be online bidding?
Yes, only online.
We'll have to publish notice of auction two times in the paper, too, so it'll be published in the local newspaper of the dates.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Takes us to new business. Our first new business, Item A, is discussion only. It's the Highway 385 reconstruction update. At the weekly meetings that we've been having with the contractors, we've been discussing how the schedule... how the schedule's going. Anybody that's watched the construction certainly understands they're not as far along as they thought they were going to be. The project was originally a two-year project. The first phase of it would have been from Taco John's up to the police station. And then in 2023, it'd been from the police station to just west of Dollar General on the north end of town. They haven't made the progress that they hoped, and I'll explain why after I give you the new schedule that has been approved from the, by the contractors. They'll continue with Phase Two, and that's to, from South Chicago down to Sunny's Grocery, or Sunny's Grocery on South Chicago to Detroit Avenue. So that section from Sunny's up to Detroit, not through the intersection, but to the intersection. Craig, you had mentioned you had driven by there tonight, and you'd seen that there was an awful lot of concrete that was laid. So that's what they're working on now, is to complete that section. Then they're going to move into what was originally identified as Phase Four, and that's to go from the north end of Baltimore, the intersection of Baltimore and University. That's by Ace Hardware. So again, it'll be on the north end, to go from there up to University, the intersection. They'll also be completing the work in North River Street, right in front of the post office. So there'll be that block of, or that section of downtown from Ace Hardware South to Lynn's Dakota Mart. That won't be part of the road reconstruction this year. Then they're going to start working on North River Street, the, from Jennings to Menacata, and that's to put utilities in. It's not going to be in the road work itself, but it will be the city's sewer and water utilities that they will start working on yet this year. And they'll work through the construction season and try to get as much done as they The state grants them delays for snow, rain, and heat. And they've had 17 days in the early spring that they were, and through today, that they were unable to work because of weather. There was additional sewer work that the city needed to have done from Dairy Queen over to the trailer park. Once they dug into the highway, they realized that there was clay tile as far as the sewer line. And everybody was in agreement that the last thing you want to do is put down a brand-new highway over clay tile. And six months later, you're digging on a brand-new highway to replace a sewer line that's collapsed. On Jennings Avenue itself, that was the work that the city added to that. That was added after last year when we had the water main break there in front of Jim Sword's law office and identified that that water line would need to be replaced. So there was additional work necessary there that totaled eight days delay in the project. The work in front of the police station, that was an additional three days. There were water valves that needed to be replaced on Galveston Avenue, that's five days. The sewer work in front of Dairy Queen, I forgot to mention, that took 26 days. And then drop inlets all along the project, those are the storm sewer inlets to avoid the city's utilities, those took four days. So there was a total of 46 days of city work that needed to be done. 17 days of rain, snow, and heat. And then there was some work by the Pioneer Museum sign poles. When they got to digging there, they realized that the foundation for those poles were part of the road, so there was a delay there. They needed to widen the lane on the south end of the project. So totally in the 46 days for the city's delays, 14 days for work related to state items on Jennings Avenue, 14 days, and then weather days, 17 days. There's been a total of 77 lost days to the original schedule. And those days are Monday through Friday. It's not a seven-day work week, it's a five-day work week. So when you add all of that out, they're right about three months behind schedule. So that's the reason that they needed to adjust the schedule to, again, finish the work from Lynn's, or from Sunny's up to the Detroit intersection adjacent to Lynn's. And then they'll go from the north end of Baltimore intersection up to University Avenue. So I wanted to share that with you. There, the hot springs reconstruction.com website will have these updates on it, plus the contractor will be providing updates to the newspaper as they have all along. So the public will be aware of the delays in the project.
They're going to do the intersection by the eye clinic?
Yes.
Have we asked them about that, one spot that needs fixed?
Yes. They're aware of that section and the one by Glass Pro also. Billy was able to talk to them, and they'll get back to us to let us know possible causes.
The one by Vision, of course.
I didn't hear the second one you said, Mayor. You said yes and the one by?
Glass Pro. Glass Pro.
I thought I heard Bass Pro Shop. I was like, we don't have one of those. Thank you.
So then they'll be switching to North River Street still this, this year?
Strictly for utilities, Deborah.
So what does that mean, a trench, and then they close it in again?
Yes.
Okay.
The other update for you, we had talked to you about the costs for the additional 1,900 feet, the cost for the additional 1,900 feet of water line from Menacata up to Dale's Restaurant. That was last fall. Tracy had put together some estimates that he thought that additional 1,900 feet would be around the $420,000 figure. And we got a confirmation from Dave Buck, who is the engineer estimator for Complete Concrete. They're the main contractors for the project, and they did confirm, after they looked at all of the pricing and the work that needed to be done, that the cost for that additional 1,900 feet would be $421,923.25. So for the public that might not have previously heard why the council approved that, if you remember, last year there were two water breaks on the north end of River Street, one by the Flatiron and one up by the Courthouse. When they dug into both of those leaks, they found that the pipe that had been replaced back in the early 80s, I believe, had not been set properly. It was at a time when PVC was very popular, and they felt it was pretty much indestructible. So they used large rock or whatever was available to them to bed the pipe. And the water department is seeing throughout town where the PVC pipe was bedded like that. The constant vibration of the water running through the pipes setting on rock edges have actually been causing it to fail. And again, to the point of putting a brand-new highway on questionable utilities, it didn't make sense to leave that 1,900 feet of improperly bedded PVC under a brand-new highway. So the council approved replacing that as part of the project.
So do we have a, how far they're going to go on North River Street this year with the utilities? Do they have an idea how far they'll get up the street?
No, as, as far as the weather will allow. If we have a mild winter, they're optimistic to get to Menacata or further north.
Okay.
Really depend on the construction season.
They'll keep going if they can, as far as, okay.
Yes.
Past Menacata. Okay.
Yep.
It'll be nice not having water breakage anymore ahead, that we have to keep spending money for ahead of the project.
That's the hope.
So that makes sense, to get it done as soon as possible.
And the contractor for the suspended sidewalk will be on North River Street, I believe they said this morning, Jeff, around November, they'll start getting in there and putting in the foundations for the uprights, upright supports for the suspended sidewalk. North River Street should be busy this, or this fall. Any questions? All right, our next new business item is a discussion only again for countywide law enforcement. We've talked about this a couple times, to let the public know that the council has agreed to have discussions with the county commissioners regarding countywide law enforcement. At the last commissioners meeting, Deborah, Melanie, Linda, Bill, JR, myself, I've talked with the commissioners in executive session. So we can't share any of that conversation with you, but we did agree on a way forward to begin these conversations. So we'll, now that we have a new police chief on board, we'll get him involved in those conversations. Sheriff-elect will be part of those conversations, and that representative from the county commissioners. Bill and JR will also be part of those conversations, other council members, if they want to attend. They are not going to be meetings open to the public initially. We need to come up with a contract that both sides can agree on and then come up with a cost. Before we present anything to the public, I've said every time I've talked about this that I don't feel this is a decision that the council should make. This is a decision that the residents of Hot Springs should make, where they want their law enforcement to come from, whether that comes from our own police department or whether that comes from countywide law enforcement. I've also said that my personal belief is it should be our own police department. You can't fix a problem that you don't own. And I like where our current police force is going. We'll involve everybody, but we'll begin having those discussions. And again, reminder to the public, if you have an opinion, let your council representatives or City Hall know what you expect out of law enforcement, where you want it to come Any questions? All right, moving on, new business, item D, a possible motion discussion to schedule C, thank you, possible motion to discussion to accept a 30,000-gallon propane pre-buy.
I make a motion to accept 30,000-gallon propane pre-buy quote and approve the 2022-2023 contract agreement from Enning Propane at $1.84 a gallon.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Now, new business, item D, possible motion discussion to schedule a public hearing.
Make a motion to discuss, to schedule a public hearing at 7:10 PM on 9/19 for a use permit on review for customary home occupation for Ryan and Stacy Hannah for an in-home carryout specialty bakery at a future residence to be located at 27474 Galveston Heights Street.
Second. Discussion.
Just want to clarify that this is like essentially just up behind winner's circle, just for people to know.
Could we get letters from the neighbors?
They'll have to go through that whole process.
I know.
Is it like a, kind of a, I want to say like reviews from?
Can't hear you.
Use on review? Yeah, yeah, like? If any, any neighbors oppose it, basically.
They'll have to notify everyone within 200 feet.
If they have, they'll post a sign.
Everything that we did for vacating the alleys or whatever.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item E, a possible motion discussion to approve a plat.
Make a motion to approve a plat of Lot GC-24, 27R and Lot GC-87R Boulder Falls Edition, Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, formerly Lot GC-27 and Lot GC-87.
Second. So this appears to be a straightening of the lot line?
Yeah, that's what I saw.
If I'm looking at it correctly?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item F, a possible motion discussion to approve and authorize a future supplemental appropriation.
I make a motion to approve and authorize a future supplemental appropriation of $7,000 of perpetual care fund 701 to purchase one new mower for the cemetery with the concurrent of the cemetery board.
Jeff, I believe you met with the board?
Yeah, I mean, to refresh, or to explain this to new council members, the perpetual fund set aside for the cemetery, well, let me rephrase that, is that those funds are set aside from the cemetery and the perpetual fund committee, excuse me, the cemetery committee is, has essentially control over recommending how those, the monies are spent. They generally don't support equipment, these kinds of things. We went, after our budget meeting, we went back to them and asked if they would help us this year in support of, at least buying one of the two that we need. They agreed to take the $7,000, or to recommend that council use 7,000 of the perpetual fund that's set aside. They think the balance there was maybe 16,000 or 17,000, I forget exactly the number, but they have available to them. And so it's, it's money that by, by law has to go back into the cemetery specifically, which this does. It's just not, they generally, we generally don't support them with, or excuse me, rephrase it, they don't usually use that money to support city provided equipment and that kind of thing. So this is kind of an out of, one-off.
So they're the only ones that use it, then?
Right.
Yes.
Funds are designated for the perpetual. This is the first request, other than like doing minor repairs to cemetery signs because we just recently?
They don't have a lawnmower?
Well, yeah, and if, if council will remember back to our three-night budget marathon, that we had, we had asked for two mowers in next year's budget, and the recommendation was made, and I believe Misty brought it up, that, you know, well, let's approach the board and see if they would support it. I asked for two, they said, no, we'll give you one. But Misty's right, this is generally not how we, you know, generally the arrangement is the city provides all the equipment and manpower to do these things, and then the perpetual fund money is used, you know, as, to Misty's point, you know, for sidewalk repairs and gravestone repair and that kind of thing. So they, they have not in the past, to my knowledge, at least in the near, near past, you know, provided money, you know, for this. We just explained to them that it's a tight year and we really need to get equipment in. And they had said, well, we'll buy one if you'll buy the other. What we told them was we will try to buy the other in '23. I, we can't guarantee that, but that is, we do need two altogether, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item G, possible motion discussion to approve and authorize a future supplemental appropriation.
I make a motion to approve and authorize the future supplemental appropriation of $2,500 from the general fund 101 on a side fund balance to the airport, building repairs and maintenance budget 101-43500-42520 for the installation of a shower stall at the HS Airport.
Second. Discussion. Jeff, I believe this one's yours?
I will, this, this came up at our budget workshop meetings, and I will defer to Rick on this, if he's still here. Rick, if you'd like to answer any questions specifically on this. What I will point out is that we had budgeted this in the 23, asked for it in the 23 budget. The council looked at the 22 budget and said, well, you've got some money in there. And so when we- And so when we went to look at that, though, it was in the wrong object line. So essentially, we're not going to use it in a different object line. Go ahead, Rick, I'm sorry.
And I would add, the airport's already overspent budget by about 7,500. So there isn't extra to use.
So I think the need for a shower comes at, as the airport is growing, we're getting more traffic, we have the seat program people there, lots of people flying in. I, I think it's something that would be a, for a customer service perspective on the airport, to have a single shower available to people that need to take one, that are, that fly through the airport. It's very hot in the summer, we're talking airplanes don't have air conditioning that fly into the airport. We're not a hotel, we're not providing towels, soap, whatever, we're providing a, a shower stall for people to use at the airport.
Just, if I can, Rick, this has been discussed at Airport Advisory for a couple of years now.
Long before me.
That, yeah, prior to Rick's arrival, that, I can't remember, camping airports are becoming a thing where people put a tent and sleeping bags in their airplane and they travel around the country. The benefit it has for Hot Springs Airport is if, if, if we are camper-friendly for the airport, then they come, they know they've got a place to stay, they can shower, they gas up their airplane, they jump in the courtesy car, they go to town, spend some money at local business. So it's not just a matter of being a convenience for air travelers, it's, it does have a potential payoff. I, I can't quantify that, but there, there is a potential payoff that's probably not more than a, a year or 18 months, and that's a wild guess on my part. So it, it's not just a, let's be nice to the, the folks that fly in, it's...
Are we representing that there'll be revenue from this?
Through fuel sales, yes.
There's peripheral revenue from, but we can't, we can't quantify it at all.
And there's campgrounds in our area.
And let me point out, I knew Misty was going to point that out, but let me, let me say this, and I need to say it publicly, that our intent is not to build a campground. That's not, that's not our intent, is to get into the campground business. Our intent is to provide a service that is requested of us, of people flying in. And we're not going to, this is not going to be an advertised campground destination for, other than just airplanes. So that's, it's important to me because I don't want, I don't want to give the impression that we're out there, you know, putting together enterprises that are going to compete with local businesses. That's not the intent.
There are people out there that, in fact, you'll see it this weekend, that folks travel around with their tent in their airplane.
Mm-hmm, right.
And we, and we've already seen it where they land their airplane, they pitch their tent under the wing.
Right, yeah.
And, you know, hopefully they, they spend the night, they gas the plane up, they, again, they go to town, they buy dinner and so on. So there is, there is some potential revenue, both from a, a city businesses as well as us selling some fuel.
I did take a visit to Custer Airport because they're close and met with Brendan to see what he does at his airport. He has a designated little area, probably not much bigger than the stage, with a picnic table and a tree for people to pitch their tent because they don't have the amount of space that we have at our airport, that we can allow planes to tie down and pitch a tent under their wing, stay for the night. So Custer is in, they advertise that they have this at their airport. I'm not saying that's what we should do, I'm just saying that it is a service that's expected by our, by our flying pilots to actually have a space to, for some that don't want to go to a hotel, they just want to stay at their airplane, spend the night by fuel, maybe go get something to eat, and then they want to leave early in the morning while the weather is acceptable density altitude to take off early. So I did a lot of looksee of where to put a shower. I found the most compatible spot for the least amount of money for the best use of our dollars in the city hangar. If you come out for the meal on Saturday, I'd be more than glad to show you where that will be, is where it's proposed.
I just have one question.
Sir.
Um, I don't want to sound like a terrible person, but, so say we, we go along with this, who's going to keep this puppy clean?
You're looking at him, I clean the bathrooms now, I clean the lobby, I take care of all of the grounds, that's my responsibility.
Have to hire a person to do this, correct?
No, absolutely not.
I don't think that makes you a terrible person, asking that question. Those are the kinds of questions.
Those, but that's, that's a fair question. There's the bathroom right next door.
Right.
I clean it no less than once a week for everything. This is not going to be used that often, it'll be used probably in stages of, of climate that affords people to, to want to do this.
Yeah, bathroom's one thing, but a shower has to be cleaned every single time because you don't want toe jam or anything like that, right?
Yeah.
You've got a lot of imagery there.
1,500 is the total amount necessary to bring everything in their habit.
So we, we have some that are supporting this. I have, I believe, a donated, I'm going to get a donated propane on-demand water heater, those run well over $1,000. That's planning to be a donation. The, to put the shower in, the stall, the sewer, to frame it, to put the door, to be pro-coed, we're looking at $2,500 for doing all of that, including the materials. We're probably looking at a small amount of money to plum it with a professional plumber at the beginning of the year on next year's budget. So everything except the final plumbing of the, but everything else will be finished.
What size room is this going to be in?
It's about, it's right next to the current bathroom in the, in this new city hangar, newer city hangar.
Six by six or something like that. Not very large, this is small.
And is this hangar unlocked to the public?
The foyer area is always unlocked to the public, and their foyer is where the handicap bathroom is in the city hangar, so we leave that available. And then access to the actual hangar itself is locked. So only people that have access to their planes go in there, but the foyer is open to use the bathroom and will be for the shower also.
And shower will have handicap access also, right?
The shower, yes.
Okay.
You looked confused about that when you asked.
Well, I'm, I have to, I'm not a code person, so I'm talking the shower with a stall and a door and a bench, and it, it is a smaller room, it's light going. If you go to a truck stop, you have a shower type thing there, it's going to have walled, it's a single shower that will be available.
It will be.
We have to, we can't, we can't put a shower that's not, so, yeah.
Thank you, Rick. Any other questions?
Do you think that the 2,500 is on the light side, though, of building it?
I have a quote. It, it is very inexpensive, a lot of that area in that city hangar, because it's a newer hangar, built in 2012, I believe. There's a lot of there that's already accessible for the, for the build of this. I've had, I have a quote of this, and wanting to solidify the quote after it's approved by city council, it will be fully built, just I'm saying there will be some professional plumbing that has to be finished at the beginning of next year. So 2,500 is a very reasonable price, that includes the donated water heater, we're very thankful for that, the shower stall, the doors, the, the, the building of that shower area, the access for the sewer to go through the drain, all of that is going to be all done under that $2,500.
Concrete?
There's no concrete needed, it's going to be a raised floor.
Okay, raised floor, okay.
Because you don't have sewer service out there, so where does the sewer wastewater go?
Sewer wastewater is all septic at the airport, and we're, we're actually just type, piping right into the sewer that goes into the city hangar itself, the sewer that's already there. So basically, we're just putting a drain to it, we're tapping into the water that's behind, there's the bathroom, and then there's going to be the shower. So that wall is where we're tapping in for the hot and the cold water to go to the shower. And then the drain is going to go through the actual bathroom itself, just a little step thing on the edge. So the, the cost is very minimal for what has to be done by, by the contractor. So we're actually doing, it's pretty inexpensive.
If you look at the site, you'd say, why was there no shower put here when they did this? It looks like it, so.
I'm sorry to have to point this out, but I think it's important that they know. Can you share, so this is, we're asking for approval before we do it, but can you share approximately how much the airport is already going to need in supplemental appropriations before the end of the year for budget authority that's already been exceeded?
I think that's on some of our other agenda items on this, is it not?
No, it's not, it's not on this one. But I just think it's important that they know.
No, it is important.
There's about $7,500.
So let me, yeah, let me point out, I don't, Misty will, I'm not giving the exact numbers, but we're about $7,500 over on our expenditure side. Give me the revenue numbers for...
Without fuel.
Hang on a second, give me the total revenue numbers.
So for right now, we were projecting, we both have, we have the budget, then we have the, the revenue. Projected revenue for the airport for the year of 2022 is $88,000. I'm currently at revenue 98, and that includes courtesy car, hangar rentals, and fuel. And my goal for our airport, it is a goal that I have, is I want my budget and my revenues at least to match.
Enterprise.
Yeah. We don't do that, though.
And that has not happened. We're selling approximately 500 gallons of fuel a week. We are the cheapest fuel in the area, and we're still making $1.50 a gallon. Fuel is a big portion of our revenue. My revenue for courtesy cars, I am 1,000% over projected revenue for courtesy cars.
Let's put a pin in that.
Yeah, we had one when we started.
Let's put a pin in that, we have the next motion we need to talk about on cars. But if you want to go ahead, if you're okay, if the council's okay on this, we'll go ahead and, and you can vote on the, on this first one.
On the shower?
Yeah, on the shower alone, please.
Sorry, I didn't mean to get it.
No, it's okay, no, no. Better to put it out there.
So we do have, when I accepted this job as airport manager, I did not really understand what the budget was, it was one month before budget was due is when I started the job here. And that was kind of just assisted with me to try to make a budget. I came into some things that were, I would say, not well-maintained, mowers falling apart, I had markers on the airport held by safety wire, we had vehicles that hadn't had oil changes, the tractor for, since 2017. This, these things needed to be done to maintain our, our airport. The costs of some of these things were up, some of my items didn't have budget line items. I had no budget line item for changing the blue taxi warrants that are required by the FAA to be on the taxiway. So I used supplies. The supplies for those alone was almost my whole annual budget. So I want to do what's right for the airport and what's right for the community and also the taxpayer. So I'm asking for some of these line items so that we can put things where they need to be and then hold me responsible for next year's budget.
And I am happy that we're doing it right the first time, and I'm sorry I had to point that out.
No, no, that's important. No, it's, it's important to know where we are, I'm not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. I believe the shower right now is a, it's a good time. I have a good local guy that's going to do it, and he's going to do it at a fair price. I mean, $2,500, if you went to do something like that in your own home, I don't think you could do it for that price.
That's a very good price.
So, and part of it is, you know, he's willing to work with the, with the city.
And I should point out the excellent inspection that Rick got last month, and I think we put a copy in the last council meeting, I forget, but anyway, so I mean, Rick has accomplished some maintenance things on the airport that need to be done by law and, or by regulation anyway, and so, these are all good things. Anyway, sorry, we're getting way off topic.
I'm sorry to be off topic, but there is a cost involved. And I want to see what is the benefit for the community. I think a shower, a single shower, I mean, I've went around to other airports, they're already there, they were built into it. Plus, I'm looking at, the seat program is here, we also have now a maintenance company that's here. What if somebody got, I think even for a safety issue, a shower, what if you got chemicals? I deal with pesticides, and we have nothing to, to clean ourselves in case they need to. So I think the shower has a safety issue, it has a, a customer service issue, and it also provides the need that those that want to fly through and maybe take a shower before they, before they leave.
Wouldn't you want to have a shower separate for what you just said versus having a shower that the public will use? I mean, that doesn't make any sense to me as far as being safety.
Well, it's, it's a shower.
A shower, yes, I understand it. But if you're going to have what you just said, you're going to need a shower for pesticides, chemicals, things like that.
No, I'm just talking about just washing yourself off. I don't, yes, I, I know what you're saying, we don't have that and hope that doesn't ever need to be done, but just to even clean up, if you had a really bad day or if I got a little bit of chemical on me from doing spraying that I do all the time, I think a shower would be helpful.
I'm happy you take showers, thank you, it helps me.
I think the shower is a good thing, but I just don't know for this year if it's a good thing.
Okay. I'd like to go back to an answer to Misty's question.
Yes.
How far over budget is the airport right now?
7,500. Well, we've asked for 7,500 more for the heat.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I'm not comfortable giving you the exact number, but that's what I already have on my supplemental appropriation for the last time I looked at the expenses spent year-to-date, but we still have more of the year and that won't be passed until November.
Okay.
And things continue to be, I have to do it. So I, I think around 7,500, and that's just in those categories that are like supplies. You didn't even have the number of courtesy cars you did when your budget was approved for 2022, so we've changed a lot of things that in your defense made it more expensive, so we've needed to do it. And I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but my estimate is somewhere around 7,500.
But at the same time, and I understand, and we have discussion all the time, this is a municipal operation, we have to remember, though, it's not an enterprise. However, you know, airport is already, what, X number of dollars ahead year-to-date.
Everybody can do that, though. We may be careful.
That's not the point, everybody can do anything.
We're modest in our revenue projections, and we try to be reasonable.
Yeah, but what hap, wait, wait, one second. What happens if he wants this and then somebody else jumps up and wants this, and somebody else jumps up and wants this? Do we set a standard, do we set a trend? What are we doing here? I mean, you can quote all the numbers you want, reality says for that.
You have to look at each request individually. So the request for the 2,500 for the shower, and I, I don't, I don't know that tying revenue to an un-enterprise fund is the right way to approve it, you need to approve it because based on what he said, you think it's necessary.
I think it's a factor in the approval process. I think people need to understand, council and the public need to understand that we spend money in certain areas and they do have a return on investment. I realize they're not enterprises, and I realize the airport is not an enterprise, but when we talk about, and Bill mentioned, you know, the, the second, third level effect on the community on increased business of the airport, you know, the, the perception of this, of the community, the putting our best foot forward, excuse me, those things are important, they're not measurable, not quantifiable, and, and I could argue this all night, but I guess my point is that we do, it is a factor in, in these decisions, I think it should be.
I think we'll easily make up $2,500 from them coming in and spending money at our restaurants and at our stores, and, and we're already got, the courtesy car thing is doing so well, and, so I think we'll make up that $2,500 easily.
Yeah, and Deborah, we've been talking about a shower at the airport for many years. I've got a small window here of an opportunity, I've got a good price, I've got a guy that's going to do it, he's willing to step in and do it during the winter, during the fall months here when his business slows down. I can easily let this opportunity go, and maybe a year or two years from now we'll pay double, and that's okay. It's really a decision we can make now or we can let it go.
I have a problem, given money, you're, you're asking, the next two things, you want to take money out of another entity thing in there and add to you, and you're $7,500 over budget now.
And I explained why.
This is just September.
Yes, and I, I understand, and I explained why I'm over budget. We did not...
I know that, but you're still over budget.
We didn't do that, we're still over budget, yes. And everything is...
It don't matter why, but you're over budget.
Yeah, I did make a full list of all the items and why they're over budget, which can be provided.
Well, the irony is, we're also over budget on revenue, but nobody wants to hear that. So, okay, you know, that's, that's, that's my argument, I won't, I'll keep my mouth shut.
You heard it, correct?
No, I won't keep my mouth shut, but... No, I won't keep my mouth shut, but...
Rick, realistically, how much tent camping season is left this year? We're getting into October, November.
Yes, we have a fly-in, I estimate at least fifty people here. This is, it won't be done by then, but we have somebody who's going to be taking these people away to, Clinton will be taking them off to help with that. The request of the people is, they, they would like to have a shower, and they would come here to stay, spend the night, go into town and eat, some even will go spend money at attractions or whatever, they come here on purpose. The amount of camping, it's, we've lost the rest of this year. We would have it built for, prepping for the next spring.
Okay. Well, I'm going to be the devil's advocate in this. Council, you worked awful hard to get to a structurally balanced budget to not take money out of unassigned funds for 2023. We're not just looking at twenty-five hundred here, we're looking at thirty-five hundred in the next, in these two items on top of twenty-five hundred. Jeff's comment that we're over on revenue, I, that's good. Anybody that was at the admin finance meeting today knows that we have some serious problems funding our road reconstruction project. And we're going to need to grab dollars anywhere we can to fund that project. So I just throw that out there for council's consideration. When we're talking about where are we going to find the money, well, it comes out of savings. Anything we're over in the airport in revenue may be able to go somewhere else. That's, that's my thoughts on these two motions that are in front of you. So, any more comments on G? Any more questions?
However the, the vote comes out, Rick, it's not, I don't think it's, it's not going to be a statement on that it's an invalid.
No.
Request.
Yeah, exactly. No, we appreciate everything you've done out at that airport.
We understand what you're saying, sir.
I will say, I will not, try not to be disappointed, trying to do the best for the flying public. It's important that we do the best for the flying public, that's, that's my heart.
No, and that's fine, you need, you need to passionately try to persuade us. You are department head, and you need to passionately try to persuade us regarding your department. It's just that we've got forty-three departments that we have to, to take care of, and we also have a, I don't know, you've got a nearly empty fuel tank that we've got to figure out how to take care of.
It is, it is true, and I will say that, you know, like I said before, we, we have a window, we have a good price. We can let it go, and I know that we'll be back asking for it again at another budget meeting, and it will probably be more expensive.
I understand.
Let me clarify one thing the mayor just said, though. Bob, you talked about the next motion asking for thirty-five hundred, what'd you say, thirty-five hundred dollars? We're asking, actually only a thousand dollars more than what's already in the budget. He's got four thousand in the budget, he's asking for another thousand, I have to read the numbers, off the top of my head.
Get to that one.
What?
Should we get to that?
No, we're not at that one yet, but you mentioned, I'm talking, this is part of the process, and you mentioned the, the next item, and so I want to clarify, he's not asking for another thirty-five or one hundred or...
No, I think he said combined, twenty-five...
Additional thousand dollars, or what he's already got in.
The added two.
I think he said combined twenty-five hundred for this project, and then the next line item for another thousand.
Oh, okay, then I misunderstood, I apologize, then, Bob, you were correct. I stand corrected, thank you, Jared.
All right, any more questions?
Is, do we get three bids on this job too, as well?
No.
Right now, with the, with the, with the way business is, I have everybody that's building homes give me a zero bid, they don't want any part of it. I have, I have one solid bid at twenty-four seventy-five for the bathroom. The other ones are no bids because nobody wants to touch it. They said it would be ten thousand dollars, and they don't want to do it.
And this, this person would be, I guess it would be a bid, and they'd have to do that?
It's not a bid, it's just a, it's a free quote, but it's...
A free quote, so is it a change order?
I have, I have the three quotes, and I have the other people that I've talked to. I do have the three quotes listed and can provide it, but the only one that actually said, yes, here's a dollar amount, was just one.
What change orders, would they be?
No.
We can't even think about that.
It's a valid concern, it's pretty small.
All right, any more questions? Ms. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Linda Varvel?
Yes.
Melanie Wilson?
No.
Craig Romi?
No.
Larry Pratt?
No.
Bill Lukens?
No.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
No.
You have five no's and two yeses.
All right, the motion was not approved. Onto new business, item H, possible motion discussion to approve and authorize a future supplemental appropriation.
I make a motion to discuss and approve and authorize a future supplemental appropriation of a thousand dollars from the general fund 101, unassigned fund balance to the airport machinery and equipment budget for the purchase of an additional courtesy car to be used at the Hot Springs Airport.
Second. Discussion.
I'm sorry, second, thank you.
Jeff, Rick?
Rick, go ahead.
So, we have two courtesy cars. We have no means of anybody at the airport to get to town or to travel once they arrive except our courtesy cars. That's just a fact. We, I turn away people weekly to go somewhere else. They need to come, they want to come, they want to spend the night, they want to spend several nights here, and I have no means for them to go into town. During the process of looking at how to fix this, we've had several meetings at the airport committee brainstorming multiple ways to try to find a way to, to give the people a means to go into town. Our courtesy car, Misty and I sat down and figured out how to cost these things, and we have a fair price for a car. There is a car that's available to us to purchase. It is a car that is at Hills Edge Auto Dealership where he's been fixing it. It was an abandoned, or it was a van, and he now has this Dodge van, which is a perfect vehicle for customers because you could put baggage, you could put a family, and the price of that car is under five thousand dollars. You can't buy a car at that price that isn't that good a shape. It's got good tires, it's got air conditioning, it has a means to provide the need of the customers in the area. I want to remind everybody that we charge fifty dollars a night for a car. To date, I am over three thousand dollars of people using the cars to this point, and that's just the two.
How many requests have you turned away because we didn't have vehicles?
Uh, over the holiday weekend, five people.
Over this last weekend?
Just over this last weekend, and that's just the way, way it is. Most of the time, we could get by with three vehicles, moving them around. I have a checklist, I go through the cars, I wash them, I clean them, I help maintain them. They're, they're good vehicles for the, for the public to use. I know we're an airport, and now I'm in the rental car business. But it is a means to, to meet the public's needs, there's no other way for people to get to town.
And before anybody asks, unlike a recent purchase, this is a car that Adam has actually looked at and, and done inspection on, so if it's approved, it is a car that he wholeheartedly recommends for this purpose.
What's the mileage?
I don't know the mileage, I'm sorry.
Honestly, I don't know the mileage.
What year?
It's, it's a late two thousands Dodge van. It's, doesn't have a ding or a spot of rust on it, interior's in good shape. Because he's had it under maintenance, I was not able to get the mileage off of it because you have to turn it on because it's a digital electronic odometer, so I couldn't see the, the numbers. I spoke to Jared himself at the, at the shop, and he is holding the car on behalf of the city, which he can make at least another thousand to fifteen hundred dollars on this car.
What is the total cost of this car?
Total cost of the car at this moment is forty-five, but he's still working on the fuel system.
And we're hoping to negotiate, if we get authorization to move ahead, we'll, we'll negotiate on it.
So I'm only looking for re-appropriating the money from another budget line item, and I'm only asking for a thousand dollars. And I truly believe I've written an ROI with Jeff that we can receive this funds back in less than a year of purchasing this car. It, it's a revenue generating means for the airport and for the community.
I tried to trade in Tweety, but I only got seven hundred bucks, so they wouldn't...
He, he looked at that pickup truck and he grimaced.
It'd take four hundred and fifty days to pay for that van. I don't think you can rent that out for four hundred and fifty days a year.
Um, we're, we're talking three, three round cars.
Yeah, but we're talking one car for forty-five hundred bucks.
But I've already done three thousand dollars, and we're only halfway through the year with, with the two cars already.
Why don't you put that three thousand dollars in your shower?
I...
Because you already said no, that's why.
What's the three thousand dollars?
What is more, I think, if you wanted me to prioritize what needs to be, what is a revenue generator? How do I get my return on investment, how do I better serve the community? The rental, the courtesy car, the rental car is a definite need. It has to be that we have the, the cars for, for the people in the, in the local community to come. And they call specifically, do you have a car that I can use when I come into the airport? And they're willing to pay for it, that, or they're going to Rapid City. So that's the choice that we have. We want to draw the people here to Hot Springs, we have a lot to offer. Some of the needs that we have for an airport is they have to have transportation. They're flying in here, they need a car. It's a definite need, and it is a revenue generator. Note that I am a thousand percent over my revenue generating number for the courtesy car. And part of the reason that I am over revenue percentage is some of it's based on the rental cars, and we're just going to increase that some more. So I think the rental car is a definite have-to. I will die on my sword for the rental car.
Yeah, we just got the fueling system, and we hadn't had a year to estimate the revenue, and we added a car.
I thought we was using the yellow truck for a courtesy car.
We were.
We, we tried, but it's not in a condition that you would give to the public and charge them for.
I seen it in town on a weekend at Motel.
That was a, that was an emergency situation that I had for a customer who said, okay, I'll take it, and then I got repercussions over this. So take it for what it's worth, if you give a guy and charge him for that truck with a torn seat, with air conditioner doesn't work, that shakes when you accelerate, that the brakes are soft, the cars, the truck is a little tired, we need a car that is respectable and, and really shows the, the quality of life that we have here in Hot Springs and the service that we're providing for them, not a piece of junk to drive around and charge them for. That's, that's not, I, I don't believe that's what we really want to do as a city. And we have a window of time here for a vehicle that we, if you look at the price of used cars, they're enormous. And to have an opportunity for a car for under five thousand dollars is, is a win-win for the city and the airport and the customers.
You had mentioned that you hope you can get it for forty-five hundred.
Yes.
You're asking council to approve a future supplement of a thousand. So where does the other thirty-five hundred come from?
The other...
It's a budget line item.
It's a budget line item they're transferring over.
Okay, so by transferring, what doesn't get done that was already approved?
I think it was professional services?
No, it was, it was on the machinery.
It was on machinery purchase.
We don't know what it was scheduled for.
Like I said, when this budget was handed to me when I, when I first started, some of these things were kind of put in there. This was a purchase of new equipment.
Yeah, I have notes in our, I'm sure, Excel spreadsheet for the budget you approved that has what it was.
And we can go look at the notes and see what that, what council approved that expenditure for, and if they approve it going towards a car, what isn't going to get done.
I don't think it was specifically stated for the amount, I mean, for a specific item.
I didn't see last year's notes, so I don't know.
I'm sorry, I can't pull it up without...
But whatever, whatever it was, it was approved for is not needed for the rest of this year. It's either already been done by, by, by Rick, or it wasn't needed to begin with, so...
What happens if you need new tires on these other courtesy cars?
We've already spent maintenance on the cars that we have to bring them up to speed, which is part of the reason I'm over budget, is because they weren't taken care of. The Ford Freestyle needed four tires, the Durango needed a windshield. Everything is put to the top level of maintenance for the safety of the customers that drive them. This car we're getting with, ready to go at this price of forty-five hundred dollars. That means we're only asking for a small amount to be provided for the council, and I am saying that, you know, if there's other costs that he comes up with, it may creep towards five thousand dollars, so that's the reason I'm asking for a thousand.
So what, are you talking about the machinery object level?
Yes.
So council approved fifty-five hundred dollars for machinery, but that was for a single Toro mower.
And instead, Rick has...
Instead, I repaired the one I have.
Okay.
And that was the, the one that cost me a thousand dollars to repair. I did it by sweat and hard work in the winter months, repaired that mower to a, to a usable for several years. That was the two thousand five Toro that was put in there to, to replace it. So I, instead, I put a thousand dollars of parts into the one we have, fixed the deck, put it in good running condition so that mower doesn't need to be replaced.
Okay, so the fifty-five hundred that council approved towards the purchase of the Toro mower, you don't plan on...
I don't plan on it for several years.
So then, if I'm understanding correctly, your plan, it would take thirty-five hundred of the fifty-five hundred to put towards the vehicle, which will leave two thousand in your budget, that if it stays there, or for that particular item, if it stays there, the seventy-five hundred that you're over budget already would come down to fifty-five hundred.
I don't have a number, so I, I would agree with that.
If everything stays exactly the same from now to the end of the year.
Right, and we wouldn't have the revenue. Just, just saying.
And if the lawnmower breaks?
That's why, that's what I'm here for. I've fixed all the mowers along with the golf course, we've, we've done, I've spent a lot of time on that mower fixing it.
I thought the airport bought it a brand-new lawnmower.
We did, that's a bigger deck, this is the small deck to go around the small hangers in the lobby. It's a, it was a small rider, kind of like what you have.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
So, in summary, I took that time and effort to fix the mower that we were going to replace, and I'm asking if that could be used to purchase the courtesy car which we really need.
Any other questions? Ms. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
No.
Craig Romi?
No.
Linda Varvel?
Yes.
Melanie Wilson?
No.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Okay, you have four yeses and three no's.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
I will say, just in summary, this is a revenue generator. I'm going to make money from this car. It's going to come back to the city.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Yes, I appreciate your passion.
All right, on to new business, item I, a possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract.
Make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Missoula Children's Theater for 2023 Performance Workshop, not to exceed four thousand dollars.
Second. Discussion. Jeff, I believe this one deserves.
Yeah, this is a, this is a 2023 budget item that we need to, to, to commit to now. I, they normally ask for a deposit upfront, I'm going to talk to them and see if we can work our way around it, I'm not concerned about it. But they've been here before, they were here thirty years ago. Anyway, it's already, it's approved.
Anyway, it's already, it's approved in the 23 budget. We're just asking for authorization for the mayor to sign the contract.
It looks like the dates that we're proposing are real early in the year for this. So we need to get on top of setting, we don't have any ticket sale fee set, we don't have anybody hired to take money. If the plan is for this to generate revenue, then we need to work on that this year so that we're not.
Yep.
Jeff.
Scrambling.
Jeff.
I like scrambling.
Jeff.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Yes, over here, sir.
Sorry.
I know that some of us do realize, know what this is about, but could you, for the general public, explain?
Sure. Briefly, there's an article in this week's paper, I think if we got it in, describing it. It's a children's drama workshop. This group comes in, they are completely self-contained, they bring in a producer and a director, they are so great with the kids. They take, I forget what the numbers are exactly, roughly seventy or eighty kids. Believe it or not, they get them in there, they figure out what they're good at, what they want to do, they teach them to build sets, they teach them to do lines, the whole thing. No, excuse me, that sounded terrible.
It didn't.
They teach them lines of a play. Wow. I gotta go to bed earlier tonight. Anyway, culminating with a show on Friday evening for Mom, Dad, Grandma, Grandpa and the Neighbors, and then also a matinee on Saturday, the same thing. You know, this is not, I mean, this could be a huge moneymaker. Our intent is really to cover our costs, make a little more on the side, offer more of the nonprofits, we'll have an opportunity to, you know, sell some concessions and all that. More importantly, it's a developmental thing for the kids. We've already got the school tied into this, their drama program, so, you know, I think it'll be a good, I've done it before personally, they're, I love them because they don't take any work. They do everything. So that's, in my book, that's a good deal. Anyway, they are great about what they do. It's money well spent, it's easily recoverable financially. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. We normally charge twenty, twenty-five bucks or so, you know, for kids to be involved in it, and then we charge, you know, five bucks or ten bucks for, you know, ticket sales at the show. It's really a good, a good deal. That's what it is.
I remember when they were here last time, my daughter was in it and it was pretty phenomenal how they.
It's amazing.
They wrangled that many cats in one day.
I don't know how they do it. And they're college kids, I mean, they're just, they're drama majors.
It was pretty phenomenal what they did in a very short period of time and it really stimulated the arts in children at a very young age and my daughter lettered in drama four years in a row.
It's a good program, it's a great program.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item J, possible motion discussion to approve the special sale alcoholic beverage license.
I make a motion for discussion to approve the special sale of alcoholic beverage license application from Southern Hills Mercantile for the climate Hot Springs Oktoberfest event to be held at Centennial Park on nine twenty-four, twenty-two.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item K, possible motion discussion to approve an automatic budget supplement.
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of forty-five thousand eight hundred eight dollars and eighty-two cents to Police Department Vehicle Repair, one oh one dash forty-two, one zero zero dash four two, five one zero for repair of eight vehicles. Eighteen thousand six hundred forty-three dollars and sixteen cents to the Water Fund Vehicle Repair, six oh two dash four, three, three, five, zero dash four, two, five, one, zero for repair of three vehicles. And five thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-two cents to the wastewater fund vehicle repair, six oh four dash four, three, two, five, zero dash four, two, five, one, zero for repair of one vehicle, all damaged by hail on six, twelve, twenty-two. Revenue received from SDPAA claim, G C two zero, two, two, one, 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 three, nine, one.
Very good.
Could you explain that number for me?
We need a second.
A second.
Oh, sorry.
I was in awe.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. New business item L, possible motion discussion to approve an automatic budget supplement.
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of five thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-nine cents to the additional sales tax fund professional services and fees, two on two, two on two, zero, zero, four, two, two, zero, zero, for the construction, admin and observation of the airport ten-unit tee hanger construction project. Reimbursement, revenue received from AIP grant funding, number three dash four, six dash zero, zero, two, two, dash zero, one, five, dash two, zero, two, one.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item M, possible motion discussion to approve travel training request.
I make a motion to discuss to approve travel training request from Police Department Officer Lexie Jo Dinecki to attend the South Dakota Basic Officer Certification Training over a thirteen-week period from eight twenty-two, twenty-two to eleven fourteen, twenty-two in Pierce, South Dakota.
Second.
Discussion.
So what happens if we don't approve this? Shouldn't this been done before she left?
Technically, yes, and I'll address that in my mayor's report, the info side, or info only side of the policy.
Okay.
So I guess before that, we all knew she was going to the academy.
True.
We wanted her to go to the academy. So did we miss this? Yes, but that's why I want to chat with you about the info site only in my mayor's report. Any other questions?
I'm sorry. I'm just standing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Do we need a five-minute break?
No.
No?
As long as you don't mind me standing here. Bye.
All right. On the committee reports, first one administrative and finance, JR, Melanie?
Admin finance met today at one o'clock here at the Mueller Civic Center. Present were Mayor Nelson, Finance Officer Misty Summers Walton, Councilwoman Melanie Wilson, Councilman Craig Romi, City Administrator Jeff Temple, and I, Chair JR Huddleston. Full business additional costs related to water and wastewater, replacement road project, ongoing review and discussion is necessary. We're waiting city engineer to provide estimated costs for the not-yet-built expenses. A robust discussion was made today on expenses, bills related to the road project, the suspended walkway and the nineteen-hundred feet of line from Dale's to Minnetonka Avenue. Tracy, Misty, Jeff, and the mayor will have discussions with the state and the DOT. Number two, gauge installation at city shop propane tank. Jeff, to resolve this issue. Water wastewater on-call pay. That's been removed from the agenda. New business, review monthly finance officer report. Misty reviewed the monthly finance report and reminded council members that an approved budget is only budget authority. Discuss that we need to move one thousand five, excuse me, one million five hundred and ninety thousand dollars from General Fund one oh one and additional sales tax fund two twelve. Committee member items were none. Clothing allowance policy, PD, utilities, maintenance. JR will work with Jeff, Captain and the Chief to come up with a policy. Twenty twenty-two, twenty-three propane pre-buy. Jeff, to resolve this. Discussion changing the seasonal annual increase from twenty-five cent up to four years.
Thank you.
To either or both, a higher amount or no limit on the number of years, and increasing longevity from point five percent to one percent or another higher amount. This has been tabled until the 2024 budget hearings. Item six, discussed selling land. City owns adjacent to Simon Quarry Cemetery and Hot Brook Canyon Pumping Station. Discussed if council would be interested in selling approximately five acres of landlocked property near Simon Quarry, approximately five to seven acres of land near the Hot Brook Pumping Station, and approximately one hundred-plus acres in the Hot Brook Canyon area. Updates on PD Homeland Security Grant, that's been tabled, no info's been received. Community access road grant, streets around the school withdrawal are an update, it's tabled, no update. Updates on wayfinding signs, professional services contract with ISG. The mayor, Jeff and Tracy will meet with ISG this Thursday. And citywide auction, October twenty-sixth to November one, one resolution to surplus by September nineteenth. Notice of auction must be published two times in the paper prior to auction date, and it was briefly discussed. Meeting adjourned at two fifty PM. Next meeting is October third, one PM, Mueller Civic Center, JR Chair.
Melanie?
You did just fine. Thank you.
Any questions for JR or Melanie? Thank you. Airport advisory, Bill?
Airport advisory committee met on Thursday, September first, eight thirty AM at the airport. Members present were Shane Miller, Don Connor, Petra Wilson and Max Boxbaum. Employees present were Rick Breedenbach. There were no elected officials present due to the county commissioners' meeting and there were two members of the public present. No communications from the public. Under airport managers update, there was no tee hanger project update. August fuel sales, there was two thousand and thirty gallons of fuel sold, a hundred and five flight operations, forty-five balloon launches and four landings.
Forty-five balloon launches.
It never came back.
The rest of them are out there somewhere.
Now, I want to give you an update. Sunday, we broke ground for the hanger.
Oh, yay.
Finally.
We did a whole for the hanger.
We did have two guests, because I know you weren't there, I forgot to bring them.
Yeah.
And they commented on the delays of the hanger. They were concerned about what are we doing? And they were concerned about customers and they were promoting the airport and said that we are getting a lot more people into the airport than we've ever had.
Cool.
Close to a shower.
We had no old business items and thank you, Rick, for the update. The next meeting will be Thursday, October sixth, eight thirty at the airport.
Any questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill. Custer Fall River Waste Management, Larry?
The next meeting will be this Thursday, the eighth, at seven PM at the Mueller Center. You'd like to know what happens with the waste management district, come on down.
Thank you. Historic preservation, Deborah?
We're scheduled to meet this Wednesday, five PM here at the Mueller Center. There is some discussion per email that we don't have any certificates to consider. The only thing on the agenda is to finalize vote, the changes in the ordinances, so potentially that could be an email vote. It's not finalized, but at this point, we have a meeting this Wednesday, five o'clock.
Thank you. Evans Pledge Advisory, Linda?
We have a meeting this Thursday at noon on September eighth.
Thank you. Parks Recreation, Larry?
The meeting for tomorrow has been canceled. The next meeting will be October fifth at two PM at the Mueller Center. All are invited.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Deborah?
Planning and zoning met August seventeenth at seven PM City Hall. Present were Don Olsted, Allison Ritterbush, James Forbord, Joni Hill, Christine Heidebrink, Scott Sogi and myself. Guests present were Ryan and Stacy Hannah. Ryan and Stacy Hannah are asking for a use permit on review application for what we scheduled tonight for next council meeting, an in-home carryout specialty bakery at their future residence at twenty-seven four seventy-four Galveston Heights. A motion was made by Christine Heidebrink to recommend to the city council to approve the in-home business, and that was seconded by Allison Ritterbush and approved by all. Tom and Jesse Sweat, father and son, property owners, an interior lot line revision, discussion only. Olsted explained the details of the interior lot line revision and how it did not affect any surrounding properties as the Jesse Sweat owners owns one parcel and Tom Sweat owns the adjacent parcel. They were simply moving an interior lot line to create more area on the west Jesse Sweat's property. And then the other lasted item was Hanson setback encroachment on an existing shed. Discussion only. Olsted had earlier explained to Mr. Hanson that the P and Z Commission could not correct the issue that was apparently causing many years ago due to an improper lot division. Sogi explained that there were other alternatives he discussed with Mr. Hanson to allow a shed to be built attached to the residence. Oh, also discussed was Hot Springs Contracting License Classification Project Value Limits. A Class A will be for projects, it used to be up to five hundred thousand, now it'll be a million dollars. A contractor Class A two used to be for five hundred thousand projects, that will now go up to a million. Contractor Class B projects up to thirty-five thousand is, would be changed to one hundred thousand. And Class C would be no changes. Classes of licenses are one ten dot one seven, and it lists those out kind of as I explain And then Dakota Kind LLC doing businesses, Wild Horses Dispensary, report status. Scott Sogi said this is a moving forward, this is moving forward, and they are preparing the drawings and property layouts for their submission to the City of Hot Springs. Dollar General Concrete Corrections, Olsted, Forbord and Sogi talked about the situation and how the contractors sped up the concrete work and performed a bulk of the work on a weekend. They did not follow basic concrete preparation work and certainly did not follow the City of Hot Springs street specifications. So that's still being rectified. And lastly, oh, no, not lastly, it keeps going. Ordinance thirty dot twenty-seven, City of Hot Springs Planning Commission. Sogi wanted to discuss the P and Z Commission's annual report as it is incorrect in our city ordinances. He thought that while we are reviewing the ordinances, we should look at other areas to see if any changes are needed. Then under old business, the Martin Tract implementing a PUD for their new subdivision to allow five duplexes. This is close to the road in front of where you turn into Boulder Falls off of Highway seventy-one. Scott received a call on eight sixteen twenty-two from Renner and Associates of Rapid City. No additional information at this time, except that the project may be back in progress. The Canton Street Halt Homes RFP, completing unfinished developing work in the ROW and lot drainage to the neighbors' property. Scott has been in contact with Chad Heinert Construction, who is also building a retaining wall on the adjacent Bishop property. A short discussion followed based on the uncollected fifteen thousand dollar gifted funds plus the costs of corrections and completion of the RFP. Additional dwelling unit options, review the individual edits received of. Additional dwelling unit options, review the individual edits received of the ADU specifications. 8-17-22, no new information. A short discussion took place on the water billing and dual meter requirements of the city of Hot Springs. Sogi asked if our ADU requirements would follow other city ADUs requiring owner to live in the property that the ADU is placed. And annexation information, Mayor Nelson would like to present city annexation and the request of hiring an expert to the new city council for budgeting of the city's annexation plans. No new information on that. So the next meeting will be Wednesday, the 21st of September at 7:00 PM City Council, or at City Hall.
Any questions for Deborah?
What month is it you guys changed to 6:00 PM?
I think when daylight savings time.
Okay.
Happens.
Thank you.
Well, I have a question for Deborah.
Uh-oh.
What is it I'm presenting to the council for their consideration?
Yeah, we went professionals to discuss or to help us with annexation issues.
Okay, I understood you to say that it was my idea to present to council.
That's what it says.
Well, that's news to me.
Well, I guess you should have been there. Put the words in your mouth, apparently. I think that was brought forward from several meetings prior ago when you were there.
I remember having discussions that, you know, we need to figure out what we're going to do if we're going to annex, where it might be. But I don't recall ever saying that I need to get something in front of council. I do recall saying we need to have the conversation about what we might put in front of council. I didn't, okay?
I guess we're putting a fire under you, get things rolling.
The limits for contractor licensing, so that'll come to council on a future fee resolution to change? Those amounts?
I guess we need to ask that of Scott.
And maybe we don't. I just know that those fees and then up to the amounts are listed on there and it came from the ordinance, right?
Yeah, 110.17.
Changes to that will have to be made by the council.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Deborah.
Yep.
Public Safety, Bill, JR?
Next Public Safety meeting is this Thursday, September 8th, 2:00 PM at the Mueller Center Conference Room. And just a reminder, we will hold some of the meeting if folks do have an opinion on or would like to ask questions about countywide law enforcement. We may not have any answers, but we'll certainly record your questions or comments.
JR?
I concur with Bill's statement.
Thank you, gentlemen. Public Works, Craig?
New business, ADA ramps near Massa Down. We talked about that. We need to get people that drive the buses around town to park their buses there and see where the best place would be to put one of them. And then we'll talk through the city and see if we can get that taken care of.
See if I can talk to that guy for you, sir.
Okay, but you're not the only one.
I'll talk to the other people too, sir.
Larry's going to help me work that out.
ADA accessible sidewalks on the north end of Centennial Park. We figured that out. We're going to try to use the sidewalk that they took out the curb to do all the river work. When we put it back together, we're going to put an ADA accessible ramp there.
And try to get people in that park in front of it like they do the other one all the time.
Correct. Yeah. Well, it should be painted yellow or something. Maybe we'll have to look into that next. Irrigation around Depot Building, two park areas. I'm guessing the two park areas is the new ones we're looking at. We talked about those in the depot. I guess none of it's on in the agenda, except this, that we was going to do that for sure. See, my recollection is that we had the money for the depot, but Mr. Nelson, Mayor Nelson, explained to us that there was no money there, put aside for the depot. And there's nothing put aside for these other parks yet. So it's something we got to look into. Probably won't be this year or next year, because we didn't really budget anything for next year. But the ones that the state's doing, you know, that one should be done, whether they're doing it. Where the money's coming from, I have no idea. So, wire department don't have it. We're really tight with money, so I don't know where the sprinkler system's going to come from. Update on the cleanup of property on Evan Street. I guess the city paid for a container to be at somebody's house and they're filling it up to the city's expense. How many things have they filled up and emptied?
Well, one huge one, one of the large 16 cubic meter, whatever those are, I forget. But only one right now.
You've only done one so far?
Yep.
It's getting full. I drove by it.
Yeah.
Okay. So has other people asked for that container to use too, or?
Yeah, are we assessing the property owner?
Yep.
So other people can't use it because the charge for it will be assessed to the property owner?
Is this one going to be assessed to property owner too?
Well, that's something we want to discuss in committee, because I don't know. I mean, it was, we ordered the dumpster out of, and as a budgeted line object, line item for us, but we've never identified, I've never seen criteria for when we decide to do that. So, we can talk about that in committee.
And we, in the past, when we do cleanups, we do try to recover. We budget for it because we have to spend it and there's no guarantee.
So you're going to have that on the next Public Works Agenda, sir? Thank you. Proposal of new ordinance, newson vehicle. I see we have a copy of this, but I don't think it's complete, so it's going to Public Works?
And Public Safety.
I'm sorry, what was that topic?
Vehicles.
Vehicles. Misty had another copy of the old ordinance today?
Yep.
Can I come in and get a copy of that, Misty?
Another copy of the old ordinance?
Did you have a copy of the old ordinance?
Old ordinance of what? Oh, for the abandoned vehicles. I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about salvaged vehicles for surplus. Yes, it's not old, it's our current. And I shared it with Jeff.
I have it, I'll bring it to committee and then we'll go through it.
Okay. I'd like to have a copy.
Absolutely.
Streets of Maintenance, we're going to move the flag, the flag will light pole on the truck bypass, I guess, within the next 30 days. The drainage on Valley View Drive is going to happen as soon as the city can work it in. They're awful busy right now with the road project and stuff, so hopefully it'll still get done this year. Some road wall, the signs are up. So hopefully it'll keep people off the hill. All the half-free utilities of fire hydrant pressure and Edwood Terrace. And the pipe needs to be replaced because there's no pressure. And that's all I have. Oh, sorry. Mayor Nelson, Council Lady Deborah, myself and Jeff was at the meeting. My next meeting, September 13th, right here, 1 o'clock. Everybody's welcome.
Any questions for Craig?
I know it's not a, I guess I'd like to say on that handicap pad, I know with the road project going on, I'd really like to see that thing put in before the cold gets here because the reasoning behind that is that a lot of the buses have to park down by the SEMCO building, push passengers up in their wheelchairs. Snow, ice is on the ground, it's hard to do, especially in winter time. If it was put on that side, then it's easier to access quicker to come in if they come into Massa. I'd like to see something like that, maybe start a trend around town too, to have other drop-offs for handicaps, so.
I agree.
Just my two cents.
See what we can do.
Thank you, Craig. Any other questions? Thank you, Craig.
I do have an extra copy of that, so, or you go grab it. Oh, yeah, let's read that.
Southern Hills Golf Course, Jeff?
Jeff, huh? The board held our meeting last night, when the primary focus was reviewing the current fees and charges and revamping the fee structure. Kind of a complicated process because PJ is now taking that and trying to work it into the capabilities of a new POS system. That'll be done, it'll be reviewed and forwarded and recommended with a new structure after the October meeting. And we'll include it in the rest of our fee reviews. The next meeting is 10 October at the golf course at 18:06 PM, excuse me.
You're not having one on the 12th of September?
Nope, it was moved up a week.
Okay, thank you.
It was held last night.
Got it.
Much to my chagrin.
10 October.
Any questions for Jeff?
Yeah, questions on golf? The Administrator's Report, mayor's already covered my top things, which is the 385 project, additional water line. All I have on here is a reminder that the Boardwalk Hill, where Albany connects with South Garden, is closed to all traffic, even though the gates are open. Is closed to all traffic except for emergency vehicles. And I see it's being used more and more all the time.
I was with someone the other day who drove by, I'm like, this road is closed! And I don't think they're seeing the sign.
No, they're not.
It's just a little sign.
And it's bad condition, so.
It's terrible. I wouldn't go down it.
People can't read. People don't want to read. Boardwalk Hill. Oh, yeah. Exactly.
That is pretty bad.
The only other thing I've got on my list is the river cleanup by the volunteer group is now scheduled for the 14th of September. Early, 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 o dark 30 morning. They do need volunteers. And Raj Neelarmen is the point of contact. That's all I've got on the CA, subject to your questions.
What day was that?
14th September.
And they're making headway?
Yes, ma'am.
In that area?
Mm-hmm. That's all I've got, subject to your questions.
Any questions for the city administrator? Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Misty, Finance Officer Report?
Financials are through the end of August. They include the year-to-date profit and loss summary report by fund. The fund summary report, which is our budget versus actual. The cash balance report, which is the current balance in our Wells Fargo checking account. On the backside of that, you'll see the zero balance, last time I'll report on the Bank of the West account. And then the investment reports by institution and investment type that includes all of the cash assets of the city. Included in the financial reports, I also provided the 2023 budget notable expenses. That's something I've prepared over the last several years to summarize and highlight certain budgeted items. It definitely is not all-inclusive, but I hope that it helps to facilitate conversations about what was budgeted for and what's important to the city. And thank you, JR, for mentioning. I did also want to remind that what's approved during budget sessions and in the 2023 appropriation ordinance you approved tonight is just budget authority. It establishes the legal spending limit of the city. But all purchases still are always required to follow federal, state, and local bid laws and procurement policies when we make those purchases. And 2023 budget gets spent in the 2023 calendar year. Also talked about the request to transfer $1,590,000 from either or both, the 101 general fund and the 202 additional sales tax fund cash balance to the 501 capital improvement fund to help cover the future costs associated with the suspended sidewalk project. We already contracted with ISG for the conceptual design and the design development and construction engineering for a total of $433,000. And we've contracted with Complete Concrete for the construction of the sidewalk at $3,904,538 for a current total of $4,337,343,377,538. We received $2.8 million from the state in exchange for the long-term ownership and maintenance of University Avenue. And between the amounts that we've paid ISG to date, after the claims in your current batch get approved and using the remaining balance in the 501 fund earmark for the suspended sidewalk, it leaves us short approximately $1,590,000. I'm hoping it'll be beneficial to move this money now to avoid any future confusion as to what's available in the general fund and the additional sales tax fund in unassigned fund balance, especially as we continue conversations on how we pay for the ongoing, ever-increasing project costs in our water and wastewater improvement projects. The 2022-2023 propane pre-buy award was on this agenda. That's done, Jeff, you don't have to worry about that. Just the propane tank at the maintenance, the installation of the gauge in the propane tank at the maintenance shop. This year, the low bid was $1.84 per gallon from Enning Propane. That's 24 cents higher than the low bid last year. They were also the low bid provider for last season. And although we call it a pre-buy, they don't bill or charge us for the propane until we use it. So, we're not paying upfront that amount. They just guarantee us at least $30,000 at that rate for the season. The 12,000 gallon propane tank located at the city maintenance facility continues to be a topic of discussion. It will likely be added back into the pre-buy arrangement. That's my recommendation. The size of the tank is larger than necessary, but a decision was made to get and use the tank in order to save the city money. Since I was made aware of the issues and tracking them, I've continued to report to you on progress towards that goal. We purchased a new pressure gauge in March of 2020 and again in September of 2022. This one has not yet been installed, we're tracking that. After the take ran out unexpectedly, two times during cold snaps, and we said it was because of the gauge. So, each time it did run out unexpectedly, we purchased propane at the midwinter pricing, which is much higher than the pre-buy arranged pricing, which is why we do that. So it obviously failed to save the city any money. Although both Public Works and Admin Finance Committees have discussed this tank for years, we still have not resolved the issue or proven it saves the city any money by having the oversized tank at the maintenance shop. This year, I'm recommending it be added back to the pre-buy award. But we instruct the provider to only keep full to a certain yet-determined level. But once the gauge is installed and we have a better plan, that's just my recommendation, it may or may not occur. Update on the SDML Annual Conference. This is their 87th. It's scheduled for October 4th through the 7th in Watertown. As with all of their conferences, it's excellent. If you're interested in attending, the early bird discount to register for the entire conference for just $100 ends on September 23rd. So please be sure to let me know prior to that date if you're interested in attending. Jeff's interested in attending, so maybe you can carpool. And I wanted to update council and keep top of mind that the city passed an ordinance establishing a discretionary tax formula or rebate in March of 2018. The objective was to encourage the building of new houses and the repair of existing homes. In April of 2021, an ordinance was passed to repeal the original, which was poorly written and defined and failed to accomplish the desired outcomes. At that time, several property owners contacted the city, indicating they weren't aware of the program. So in the repealing ordinance, the city directed staff to review all potentially eligible property owners and notify them of the program allowing for late applications up until October 15th, 2021. Certified letters were sent to 34 property owners and 21 respondents were determined eligible to participate. With the assistance of the Fall River County Treasurer and the Director of Equalization Finance, created a four-part process and the necessary documents to annually determine eligibility and notify and distribute rebates to those eligible. In late 2021, we caught up on two years of rebates owed to eight property owners for a total of $12,691.21. And for the 2021 Pay 2022 tax period, I've prepared and sent letters to 15 potentially eligible property owners. Along with the letter, they were provided instructions and the application with a submission deadline of December 30th, 2022. If all 15 remain eligible, and you have to pay each half of the... If all fifteen remain eligible, and you have to pay each half of your property taxes on time to remain eligible, Finance will issue rebate checks totaling approximately fifteen thousand dollars for this year. These payments will continue annually until every eligible property owner has received five years of rebates. Lastly, I continue to be concerned about the future financial strength of the city and our ongoing ability to meet our financial obligations. My concerns are specifically related to the water and wastewater improvement projects tied to the road reconstruction, but also the suspended sidewalk project. We've been seeking support and guidance on what funding options we may have available, but have so far been unsuccessful in finding a solution that eases the concerns. We've not been able to determine an overall estimate of added costs related to the water and wastewater projects to date, but we did find out that to add the Minicada to Battle Mountain Line is gonna be an additional four hundred and twenty-three thousand at minimum. In addition, we continue to see near daily discoveries of items and issues that are both expensive and necessary. There is currently six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in the water fund before the claims you approved at this meeting are posted. It won't be long before this is exhausted, and we begin borrowing dollars from other funds to continue operations. We don't have a significant surplus in any fund, so even this plan will provide us limited assistance. I urge you to keep this top of mind as you review financial statements and approve claims at each meeting. We do not have any other stores of money you are not seeing on your monthly financials. What you see is what you get, and your decisions to spend have to be supported by the ongoing ability to pay for them, which is where the challenge is. And that's all I have for my financial.
Any questions for Misty? Thank you, Misty.
Misty, you said that on the next agenda, you will show, will have something to transfer from the General Fund and the 212 into the Capital Fund?
Into the restricted equity account we have for the suspended sidewalk. Get it all in one place.
So that'll, so then the only thing left will be the surprises?
Yep.
And surprises.
And the continued payments of the contracts we've already agreed to.
Mayor's report, in your info side of the packet, there are two examples of the South Dakota Basic Officer Certification Policy. And before I explain what I did with those, to Craig's point about, shouldn't this travel training request have been in front of you prior to Officer Denneke going to the academy? Yes, but I do want to assure you that Officer Denneke did sign the contract obligating her to two years with the city, the same weekend that she went to the academy. So that's taken care of. If you remember, we had a situation where an officer left employment with the city and had not signed that contract, which caused a lot of frustration and concern. And in looking at the the two examples that you have in front of you, the bulleted one is what I'm recommending. It's essentially the same as the non-bulleted one. And to me, it's visually easier to pick out the content of what's there. There is a sentence in the first paragraph of the original one. The second sentence says, "This form must be completed and signed by all parties prior to leaving for the first training meeting." I'm recommending that we change that to, "This form must be completed and signed by all parties at the time the officer is hired." When we found out that we couldn't hold the officer that resigned accountable to pay the cost of the training incurred, I had mentioned that we needed to implement a three-step process that as part of the interview process for uncertified officers, if we were gonna hire an uncertified officer, that they be made aware of this policy and that they agreed that they would sign the contract as part of their hiring. That we would then also make that part of the new employees for police officers package documents that police officers would sign, and then council would be made aware that the officer did sign that that paper before you approved hiring of them. So in in the original one, prior to leaving for the first training, there were some concerns raised that if an officer would sign this, if we required them to sign it on their hiring, they're obligating themselves to training or to two years, that they, you know, they might not be sent to the academy, and yet they would be obligated to these additional two years. So what I tried to make clear in the other, in the amended policy, is that this form must be completed and signed by all parties at the time the officer is hired, so it would be part of their signing packet. And then, "Upon acceptance and attendance of the South Dakota Basic Officer Certification, the officer acknowledged agrees and hereby stipulates to the following, unless otherwise determined by the council." So those three steps are in the original one, it just breaks them out, so they're very clear in what's gonna happen there. So in this one, it's "upon acceptance and attendance," so signing it the day they're hired, it says you have to be accepted and attend before you're obligated to those additional two years. Still gives the officer, may appeal this repayment directly to the common council and the repayment structure, all of that is the same. So for me, visually, what I want to put in front of you at the next council agenda is the modified version that says this form must be be completed and signed by all parties at the time the officer is hired, and that's the significant changes to it. So it's in your info side. If you still feel that there are other changes that are necessary, let me know. But I think this revised version needs to be the ones that we we go with going forward. So that's why that's there. So that's all I have for you. Need a motion to adjourn, unless you have any questions for me?
Take a motion to adjourn, second.
Do we need to talk about something else?
Okay.
We don't have anything else on the agenda.
What else? We'll talk.
I thought it was added to the agenda at the end.
Oh, no, we'll talk separately about that, that's a different issue. We'll get it.
No, there was no amended agenda.
No, no, that's okay.
Moved by Romey, seconded by Pratt, to adjourn at nine thirty-seven.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
See, stayed awake.